Hi guys, my name is Ty Lewis and I am the CEO and founder of Educationally Speaking Center for Learning and we are the bridge that connects the child to the curriculum. Guys, I don't know about you, but I hope that you pulled up a chair and that you're sitting and that you're so excited. I have a team of the baddest women that are representing every, just every area, just every stakeholder in education. So you're going to hear from principals, assistant principal, instructional coach, a homeschool mom, just everybody, me, for me, a special education teacher, general ed teacher and a CEO. And we're going to talk about education, what it looks like, how to survive this pandemic, how to just breathe in the midst of everything that is going on and how to finish strong. Because let's keep it real, this is May and a lot of you are frustrated, you're tired and you're like, "I am ready to throw in the towel and I'm ready to give up." But this is not the time to give up. So we're going to talk about all of these things and I hope that you're ready. We're just going to keep it real raw and relevant like we always do, have engaging conversations and you're going to be able to hear from just so many, again, dynamic women. I love the women that I'm sharing the stage with and I'm going to bring them on. I'm going to introduce them, they're going to tell you a little bit about themselves and I hope that you take in everything that we say. If you have any questions, please make sure that you drop your questions inside of the comments section and I'll be able to address your questions. I look forward to speaking with you tonight, I look forward to addressing your concerns and I look forward to giving you strategies and tips and tools to give your child access to the curriculum. So I hope you're ready, I'm rubbing my hands together like Birdman because I can't wait. If you're just, if you're, listen, if you're joining in and you don't know anything about me, if you don't follow me on my personal page, I love to have fun. So this town hall meeting is not your average stuck-up town hall meeting where we have on suits and ties and we're talking like this, no, we're going to laugh, we're going to have an amazing time and we're going to give you all of the tools and everything that you need. So get ready, uh, thank you for joining us. So I'm going to bring my friends in, my first, my first guest is a parent. One of my parents, um, her children attend my center. She advocates for educationally, educationally speaking and she is one of my biggest supporters. So Kofi, tell us a little bit about yourself, who you are and let's go.
Hello, everybody, my name is Kofi Kenny. Um, I've been on the mission field of education now for over 22 years. I've taught everything from K to eight, I've been everything as far as an instructional coach, an educator as well as an AP and now I am coaching brand-new teachers coming out of Georgia State. But my number one and number two priorities in my life is the wife of Paul for 13 years now, I think it's 13, um, and two children, Anaya who is 10 is a fourth grader and PJ who is just turned nine and he is a third grader and, um, and so I am not only passionate about educating, but I have kids that I am also responsible for educating and I'm excited to be on here with you all tonight.
Yes, so my next guest is Terry. So I met Terry via social media and Terry is a homeschool mom. Um, I'm switching the screen, I'm sorry, so you can see my logo is in her face. So she is a homeschool mom and instructional genius. And so Terry, tell us a little bit about yourself, honey.
Hi, everyone, my name is Terry King Hunt. Man, that was a good introduction, honey, I appreciate it. I'm saying, yeah, um, I am Terry King Hunt and most people call me Terry Teaches. Uh, the reason they call me Terry Teaches because my gift is education and my superpower is writing. I work with students, I work with parents, I work with entrepreneurs and experts and they come to me when they need to get the words right. I help them bring their thoughts, their expertise, who they are, I help them bring it to life, whether it's through writing curriculum, whether it is through writing good copy, making your website pop, making your emails land the way you want them to land. Um, and it's just awesome what you can do with words. I am a homeschool mom, I was a educator in the public school system for 15 years and then I just, I felt led and I just knew that God was calling me to my people and calling to, um, telling me that it was my time to take control of my children. And so we've been homeschooling for the last two years. It has been life-changing, it has been amazing. I have gotten to see my children, gotten to be in their place and let them know me. And, um, I know that it was such a time as this that we started homeschooling two years ago because we're thriving, um, we're managing, we're understanding how to cope and it's a blessing, it's been a blessing, I'm so excited to be here, yo, this is gonna be good.
All right, so my next guest, honey, so we have, I met her maybe two months ago, maybe three on social media, I can't even, I don't, can't even remember how we connected. But the thing that, that just, I was drawn to her because of her love for supporting others. And I was like, "Look at this black woman just putting everybody on a platform, yes." So she runs a group that I'm in, she is an educational advocate and bad to the bone. She's an AKA, so that's alright, I mean, sometimes, but, um, you know, she is just amazing. So I want to bring Francesca, also known as Fran, just the bomb woman, to the screen right now so that she can introduce herself.
Hey guys, how are you?
Yeah, hey, hey.
Okay, so my name is Francesca, I am the CEO of The Educator's Room. I am a former teacher, I've been an instructional coach, I've been a literacy coordinator. Um, and about eight years ago, I decided that I wanted to create a platform for educators that would basically let them tell what really works in education. Because so many times people give their opinions, what needs to happen, but really and truly, teachers are the frontline experts. So I started The Educator's Room and eight years later, we've written many books, we have podcasts and we launched the Teacher Self-Care Conference three years ago, maybe? Um, and in addition to all of that, in South Fulton, I run South Fulton Parents for Education and I'm running for District Four Fulton County School Board, so.
I don't care what nobody else tell you, go ahead.
So I'm here and I'm present, I love education, it's my ministry, it's, I, I love it.
That's right, and we can tell by, you know, how you advocate every single day. All right, so my next guest, rubbing my hands together, I have known her since, oh my God, 2003 or '04? We met when I came to Atlanta, um, and we have been through every, I'm talking about thick and thin together, um, my sister, my friend, everything, babies, husbands, all that. Um, so I bring, so she is an assistant principal, amazing, amazing leader, was an instructional coach and, um, just doing great things in the fields of education. So I am introducing now Ms. Kia, Lord, I have to say Richmond because if I say Tana, you know, in education, honey, we call everybody by their last name and so when she went and got married, I still call her Tana and her husband is like, "Her name is Richmond." I'm like, "Child, whatever, honey," but introduce yourself, girl.
And it's been almost seven years since I've been married, so, uh, but anyway. I am Kia Richmond, I have been in education since 2003, so it's been a long road. Um, started off as a Spanish teacher, um, in Atlanta Public Schools and then from there, I've been to a private school and then back to public school. Um, so I've worked as a teacher, I've been an instructional coach. Um, I've taught every grade level in elementary school from kindergarten through fifth grade, um, with the exception of being a third grade home room teacher, but I did teach math to them. So now currently I am an assistant principal and loving every moment of it. But the, the root of who I am is education, I absolutely love it. Once I start talking about it, I can go on and on and on and my husband's like, "Okay, yeah, let me just stop you right here because Kia will talk about education all day." But that's my passion, I love kids and I love to help parents to empower them to help their kids be as good and as smart as they possibly can be. So I am so blessed to be on this platform, um, I just love Ty and whenever I can jump in and be a partner with her, that's what I want to do. And I just, these amazing women, get ready for your socks to be blown off because there's so much power here.
Okay, um, I am so, thank you so much, baby. So my next, and I'm, because we can only have six people on the broadcast, I'll take somebody out. So, um, I'm going to introduce, uh-oh, I'm sorry, honey, it's technology, like, I'm messing up. So the next person that I'm going to introduce is Shamika. So I can't remember where exactly, you know, social media is just so amazing. I can't remember where we met, it was, uh, 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 between Educationally Speaking and Facebook and our world just collided and she's just been advocating and just doing great work. So tell us a little bit about yourself.
Um, so first and foremost, I'm a mom. So, um, this is very timely and I'm so grateful for this space. Um, I am, um, everything about me is education, everyone who knows me knows that I love the work. Um, I am going into my 16th year in education, I've done everything, um, from being a pre-K teacher to elementary grades teacher to test coordinator to SST specialist and now, um, my nine-to-five, I am a partnerships program manager in the public school system and, um, I also own and operate my own after-school program, which we serve, um, seven, going on eight campuses now, so pretty busy.
Child, so you're just serving all the scholars, all the scholars. We look, we look forward to speaking to you tonight. And my last guest, um, principal extraordinaire, I feel like I have to say that, principal. So Cheryl, we met, um, on social media and, um, we've been following each other, um, educationally speaking and, um, she's just doing great things, making sure that she's impacting lives. Tell us a little bit about yourself Cheryl and what you're doing in the school system.
Okay, good evening, I am so excited to join everyone this evening and to just be a part of this dynamic group of educators. Um, over the last of my life, last few years of my life, education has just been my life and I just enjoy being able to impact student lives and be a support to parents with education. I started out as a special education teacher, it's behavior disorder classroom self-contained and then from spending a couple of years doing that, I went from there to being an academic advisor. Um, I have taught in elementary school, middle school, high school, but the most thing that I loved was that I was able to homeschool my children. Um, so I am a homeschool mom, a prior homeschool mom, our oldest daughter is a senior this year, so within this space where we are dealing with that. Um, but I currently am a principal at a private school and I'm also a school choice strategist. And what that means is I educate parents on how to make the best choice for their children when it comes to school choice.
We're going to talk about that too because when we talk about what's going to happen in the future, what school looks like, okay, so the goal here, and this is one of my taglines, to engage educators, empower entrepreneurs, prepare pupils and to fortify families. So we're talking about being in this pandemic, right? And so everybody is just emotionally, on an emotional, Fran, I see you, an emotional rollercoaster. And so let's talk about that first because I believe that we need to attack the root before we even start talking about education. So Terry, as a homeschool mom, and, and I can, you know, give some suggestions as well, but I've talked to the group prior to this and I talked about, even though my children are homeschooled, I, I see, you know, their emotions changing. And so I, I can't even fathom what it's like for you guys to be at home, being full-time parents, uh, parents, uh, employees and homeschool moms and dads. And so let's attack the emotional piece, what does that look like? How can parents sustain during this pandemic and just say, "Listen, I know a lot is going on right now, but my eyes have to stay on the end result." How can they sustain during this time?
Yeah, so I'm really, really happy that you brought that up because when I talk to people, they're like, "Oh, things must not have changed for you, everything must be going really well, you're accustomed to being home." And the one thing I have to keep bringing them back to is the fact that we have children who are hearing things that are disturbing, they are seeing statistics, their whole life has been uprooted and changed. Yes, we homeschool, but we go out, we go to class, we do different activities and they've been home for two solid months and emotionally, that's traumatic. And I think people are tiptoeing around that word, but this is a traumatic situation. And until we acknowledge that, then we have children who, some of them are bottling things up.
Yes.
Some of things are holding things in. So one of the things that I committed myself to do is, you know, I said, "I know that writing is healing, I know that writing is a way for us to manage our emotions and to feel heard when we're not speaking." So I have implemented so many different writing things for my family. We, you know, we went back to writing our family vision, our family mission. Um, I started a 25-day writing challenge where I was pulling in writing activities to get my community writing, I have a free community and it's called The Write Space, W-R-I-T-E Space, and I started an activity where I was having everyone writing. Um, I also started a class, you know, I, I have a writing class that I do and I put it out there. I discounted my rates because I want to help our children articulate their feelings and talk about what's going on with them so they can manage this trauma. Because on the other side of this, on the other side of this, we can't afford any PTSD. On the other side of this, we need whole children coming back to the classroom, coming back to our education space so that we can catch them up, so that we can bridge gaps.
Yes, I think a lot of people don't realize that, you know, here in this space, we're talking to educated women who have families and have the family, a positive family dynamic and structure, but think about the children that are, you know, that attend low SES schools. And so when you think about that emotionally and, and you think about children who are struggling and you think about children who leave, um, to their homes to escape the abuse and so all of these psychological things that are going on that we're just talking about addressing, education, 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 but we have to look at the whole child, that mental, social, emotional piece. Um, Fran, can you speak to that? You have amazing children at home, you're still working, how are you just in a, in an emotional stable place?
So first off, you know, I've had to, I have a child who has a 504, she has dyslexia and so going into this time of year is very stressful for her because all that they hear about is testing and if you don't do this, you're not going to pass and it gets to be overwhelming and there's a lot to deal with. So for her, it has been, for all of them, well, for her specifically, it has been very soothing to not only be at home, but able to learn on her pace. But we have conversations about, "We're going to make the main thing the main thing." So the main thing is that you're going to be able to do your work, I'm going to give you help if you need it and we're not going to worry about all the extra stuff. We're only going to do what we can do. And in our days, you relaxing, you playing in the yard, you reading, like doing things that are filling her up and not feeling like she's preparing for a test.
Right.
The side of that is that I'm probably harder than her regular teacher. So if she turns to me and I'm like, "Oh no, you don't write complete sentences, redo that." Whereas in school, if she has 35 other kids in the class, she might, may not be able to do that. So from the first, the first move, it was a wash, I was like, "We're not doing anything." Maybe the next two weeks, we said, "We're not doing anything, don't, I'm not opening anything." And when we finally got through it, I created a schedule for them and I told them, "This is what you, this is what you have to do every day in order to play." So I need you, every day you need to check this off and so they know, "Go get breakfast." They know, "Start on your work," you have a, that you have things at play. But for her, I think it's been very calming. For my fourth grader, he wants to be at school, like, he's like, "I want to be at school, I want to go to school." He wants to start back and even my kindergartner, she's like, "I want to go to school." And my ninth grader, like, "I just want to go back to DC." So everybody's at their different place, but I, I just try to let them know that we're going to make the main thing the main thing, you're going to read, you're going to write and we're going to learn, but we're not going to learn in getting like, um, foolishness, I'm not going to give you busy work, we're going to make the main thing the main thing.
Let's, let's shift to the workload. So I, I have been seeing so many, and Kofi, I'm gonna let you come in, I have been seeing so many comments from parents, some parents are saying they are having an amazing experience and some children are sitting home that don't have any work at all, okay? And then that's, there's this in-between thing where, um, you have children who are getting a little bit of work, but not enough. What can we say to, how, Kofi, how are you managing your child, your children's workload? And what, what does that look like for you? Are you struggling, do you have enough resources? And then we're going to chime in and give parents the resources that you, that they need.
So when we first started, I was going beaucoup bonkers crazy, trying to figure it all out because I'm an educator, I'm like, "Oh, we're going to have a schedule, yeah, we're going to make this like a homeschool."
Right.
And I was stressed out because I was going through my own emotional, mental issues with it and the kids. And then I have two kids at two different schools, two different grade levels, two different needs, one has an IEP, um, and so I was going through that. So one particular school was like already starting to be up on it, right? And they was doing it and they were like, so the teacher assigned like this one opinion right and she was like, "Your son can do it," and I was like, "I believe he can, under your circumstances." Undermine, like you inspire him, I annoy him. So I appreciate, they took my feedback and they came up with something that was way more manageable. My daughter's school had a phase-in program and so to be honest, they just ramping up and I'm like, "I'm ramping down, like, I'm not doing all of that." And so we had already come up with this schedule for them. I think I'm at the place now and I had to really fight with her school because they were trying to bully me into this schedule. Well, what I said was my number one priority for my kids right now is their mental and emotional health.
Yes.
So we're not getting up at eight o'clock being on some community call with four kids and one teacher, we're going walking as a family because that's what works.
Right.
So, and just, and the only other thing was that the two things that I said is most important for me right now with my kids educationally is, you're going to read every day on your level and I'm going to make sure you have those books, you're going to engage in that reading, some type of writing, you're going to know your multiplication facts, that's, that's across the board, no matter what happens. And we're going to help you from a standpoint of like, what do you need to do? Like, what are those skills you're going to need when you go back to school? Like having an agenda, you know, just those type of character things. And then other than that, they can learn how to do chores, how to get along, like the baby thing in their life.
One thing that I had to learn is that you have to choose your battles during this pandemic. And so whereas a lot of people are saying, "I'm just going all in." And so you're going all in and now you're stressed out, you're emotionally just attached and you're tired, but I love what you were saying, Kofi, like, you got to choose your battles. And so a lot of people, and this is where I've met, you know, my friends on the internet, a lot of people are saying, "We are homeschooling," and I'm like, "No, no, you're not. This is pandemic schooling and there's a difference." Homeschool, you get to choose, you, you have a schedule, you set up, you, you're choosing the type of homeschool that you're engaging in and, and you're, you're making that shift for your household because that was a choice. This pandemic schooling, we were thrown in this, nobody knows what's going on, they don't know what the future looks like. So, um, what we want to do real quick is shift and give you some strategies. Um, I don't want to come and just complain, you know, or just say what we're doing. We want to make sure that you walk away from this town hall meeting empowered and equipped to be able to do what you need to do for your child to succeed. So, um, Kia, um, can you please give us a few strategies on how we can sustain and how parents can, you know, um, access the pacing calendar? Look at the standards, resources that they can use for it. Uh-oh, I can't hear you, hold on.
It's me, I was muted, I'm sorry. Definitely, so I would encourage all parents to go and visit the Georgia Standards Council org website. There housed, you will find every, um, skill, every standard for every grade level, every content area that your child needs. So if your child is in the third grade and you want to know more about the math standards, you go there and you will be able to find all the standards that they'll need. I would encourage you though, um, some, some quick tips, everything in your house, everything that your child do every day is a learning experience and I would capitalize on that. Um, the other day I was baking cookies with my own child and I could not find my half-cup scoop. So I was like, "Okay, well, figure it out, here's a one-eighth, what are you going to do? I mean, any of these one-eighths is going to make that half a cup." So every little reading, I love the fact that Kofi said that she encourages and she is an expectation in her child, for her child to be on grade level, um, at all the time because the more that your child is able to read, the better they're going to get with their comprehension, their vocabulary skills are going to just flourish and their writing is going to improve. Um, I know that many of you all know that our state would now have the Georgia milestones and it's, it's simple that students are able to be able to write and explain their thinking. So I would, um, always make sure that your children have things to write and respond to what they've read, have things to read and respond to what they have read. Um, and I encourage you parents just to check over it. There's no longer a five paragraph essay that they need to write, um, any longer. So just making sure that they're able to understand what they have read and they're able to respond to it or talk about it.
Yes, in addition to that, parents, just a, a quick suggestion, crisis schooling or pandemic schooling does not look like the child being in school all day. So stop asking your child to sit at a desk from eight to three, no. Do reading and you've been reading and writing and then you do math and that's it.
That's it.
That's it. You know, so we have these expectations that, okay, my, the teacher sent a packet of work and, and we're not doing that today, okay? And so again, you have to choose your battles. So let's shift when we talk about the workload. Um, Fran, can you talk, and Kia, you guys can piggyback. Uh, let's talk about what some of the, uh, systems, uh, the different districts are adopting, what parents can do, um, when you talk about grading, what does grading look like? You know, that equity piece, parents don't know, let's fill them in.
So a lot of parents think that, I'm sorry, so a lot of parents think that kids have to do everything. If the teacher assigns 100 assignments, they need to do 100 and that's not true. Right now, teachers are grading on pass fail. So what districts want to see is that, is kids are actually engaged in the work. So one of the things that I tell parents is that you need to, before you allow your child to do any work, you need to look over it and you need to say, "Let me see what you have for this class, let's look at it." And I don't want to say determine, but I look at it and make sure that I understand it before I give it to my child. And then I might email the teacher and say, "Hey, I saw this assignment, it didn't really align to what they were going over." And the teacher will say, "Oh, don't worry about doing that, do this." So I tell parents, you need to have that open communication with your teacher and you need to understand it's pass fail, so don't. So don't kill a kid if they are not getting everything right. The point is that they're trying, that they're learning. And so for, for all of my kids, my daughter has sat at the table trying to figure out something for hours. I'm like, give it to me, I'm gonna do this. We'll come back when you're better to understand it.
Right. I definitely agree with that. And from an administrator standpoint, um, we have told our teachers, listen. We only want your, our students to do thirty minutes of work in math, thirty minutes for um reading. They can throw in the science and social studies, um but our expectation is that they are on with lives on virtual live sessions for thirty minutes. Um, and so hopefully our teachers, our, our parents are not overwhelmed because that's the thing. We don't want our kids overwhelmed, we don't want our parents overwhelmed. Um, especially, like she said, at this point, and I think it may be different from um county to county. I'm in Roselle County and what our directors are for elementary school is different from what it is for high school and middle school. Um, but I can see, but I know that we are doing, giving children opportunities to go back and make up and do um make up their third quarter grades to make them better. We're not assigning any grades for fourth quarter. So I would encourage you to reach out and understand what the expectations are for your particular school system because everybody's doing something different. Um, and making sure that you understand what is expected of your child.
Right. And so parents, I want to remind you again, and I want you to listen to me closely, grades are over. But you want to do the work. And so what's happening now is teachers are looking to see if students are in the classroom. And so they're in, in doing the work, so they're giving them a complete or incomplete. But what you want to make sure is that your child is not stopping work at home. And what I always try to teach you is that two weeks of learning that is not intentional equals one month of learning. And so when you look at that two, oh, my child didn't do anything for two weeks and now it's one month. And I saw a parent say, well, it's the end of the school year, they're not doing anything anyway. At, at, let's not think like that. And if you're not doing anything with your child every day, or you know, even four days out of the week, they are going to be behind when it's time for them to go back to school. And guess what? And Fran, it's two. Um, when you talk about May, we're stopping and they got out of school March thirteenth. So you go from March to August and we're not sure that we're going back to school in August. We don't know what that looks like. And your child didn't do anything. What do you think is going to happen? And so the school systems are scrambling right now because they do not know if they have the funds to remediate your child. Parents, this is very important. Your child missed three months of school and then the district doesn't have funds to remediate your child. What do you think is going to happen to Johnny?
Johnny is going to go in class and he's gonna be even further. And then we'll take equities. You're, it's, then it's, it's, you're perpetuating what you already know are the weak points. Parents should right now be seeing very clearly where their children are weak. And I don't believe in a testing field, but what I've promised my children is that you're gonna have to read every day and you're gonna have to write every day. That's it. And so when I speak to them, when I give her back her teacher in the fall or whether they're homeschooled, um virtual school or pandemic school in the fall, whenever I hand her back to her teacher, she's gonna be stronger because I, I'm making her do habits. Her habits is what I'm, what I'm working. Summer, kids are gonna be out. You still need to make your child read. And like Kofi said, they need to read on grade level. And then you need to talk with them about what they're reading and have them write about what they're feeling or what they're reading. Not in a way where you better read five chapters and you're gonna get a test, but in authentic way so that you're really preparing them for the real world. Because I have a stu, I have a son in high, in college. He's in college in DC and he tells me all the time, he says, mom, some of these kids get in these classes and they can't write and they struggle. This is our kids, it's not just kids of color. These are kids who are Caucasian, Caucasian kids who are getting up there and they have never been asked to write an essay or if they did, somebody else wrote it for them. And so you have got, that, that separates the kids who can and the kids who can't.
Right.
Right. I always think about the parent, like, you know, we're all educators, so some of the things to us kind of come naturally, right? Thinking in, but I would just say something, I'm a, I'm a practical educator and I try to make it practical for parents. Right now, before your child gets out, try to find out from your teacher what level they are on in reading. Are they A, B, C, D? Level is. You can go on Scholastic and find a list of books. The other thing is right now, there's so many um free uh audible books right now that you can just have your child listen to every day that you don't have to actually sit there and read with them, especially the lo, the younger kids where it can be hard on them. The other thing is, um, I hate when people say, you know, my kids was like, just read for thirty minutes. Well, that's making the assumption that a kid has that stamina. So whatever the time a kid to read, I divide it in half. And I say, okay, put a timer on, you read for fifteen minutes, jot about something you wrote, then go back another fifteen minutes. And for my child, that has made, a child who kind of, she loves to read but doesn't have the stamina. Now she's up to forty minutes, so she wants to do twenty and twenty. And so that's just, I think, a practical way for parents, like, make sure that they're reading a way that's also manageable for you as a parent. Another thing is those podcasts. I let my kids listen to podcasts to go to sleep. That's a way of getting reading in there when, or when you're sitting at the dinner table. Turn off the TV, put on a podcast.
Do you want to weigh in?
I was gonna mention, um, Ms. Fran said something about, and Kofi's mentioned it as well, knowing the standards. And I think that's the perfect place to start for parents. With them being home and you being able to actually engage with them academically on an instructional level is so impactful to the relationship between the parent and the child if you have the right support. So if you know of teachers or another parent or someone that can help you in that space, connect with someone. Don't try to do it alone if you're confused. There are a lot of people that's willing to help you, but knowing where they need to start is so important for the summer. Because as Ms. Fran mentioned, although they're gonna go back in the fall and they may be promoted, academically they're still maybe behind. And what happens when we get for assessments next year? And so we do have to think about that. Assessments were waived this year, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna happen next year. So don't give up in this space, you know, reach out, get the support you need so that your children can go back better. You know, they'll go back with more knowledge and we won't have the gas. Because in the end, they will still have an assessment somewhere up the road and we don't want to create learning gaps. So you know, I want to encourage you to, don't give up, stay connected, get the support you need.
I wanted to say too, um, and I know that I, I said this and Kofi said this as well, to make sure your child is reading on grade level. But one thing I, I thought about and I need to kind of step back just a little bit because we know right now, and again, parents, I don't want you to beat yourself up, but not every child is on grade level. We know that. So we want to make sure that we understand what our child's lexile level is. Instructional reading level so that when they are working at home, they're able to um access and understand at their level. But you want to think about what we call the zone of proximal development. You want to make sure that they understand what that is because you want to also challenge them to read a little bit above where their comprehension level is so that they continue to make those gains. When they do that, then they're able to eventually, and hopefully with your support, make it to reading on their grade level. Parents, to find out from your child's teacher, what is their lexile level?
Yes. I love that you said that Kia because I was going to make a, a point. Parents, it's important that we're not just sitting at home and you're saying, well, I don't know what to do. And this is one thing that you can do. Pull out the data. And so when I talk about data, I'm talking about testing. And so just like Kia said, what does that look like? What is the zone of proximal development? What is that for my child? What is my child's lexile level? Um, where are they? Are they, are, are they struggling in the area of phonemic awareness or phonics? And so when you think about these things, that is where you can start with your child. So it's not about, oh, the, the teacher brought, uh, sent home a lot of worksheets. It's about being intentional during this time. And so complain about different things, my child just doesn't get it in the classroom. But as a mom or a dad, when you're leaning in, you're, and you're understanding your child's learning style, which is very important. Now you have the flexibility and the autonomy to teach them how, you know, they, how you can teach them according to their learning style, because this is so important to me. And because it, it makes a difference. And so our children may not be straight A students, but they may be gifted in music. Teaching them a math lesson through music. So this is the time that you, you're intentional with your child. You're teaching them again based on their learning style and you'll see them grow at home. All of these things, the data and everything, look at it and say, where can I start with my child? So that when I give them back to their second teacher, not the first teacher, their second teacher, that I can give them back better than they came home.
I want to add to that too, because that is so important. Um, and parents, do not feel shy to ask your child's teacher. If your child's teacher is telling you that their child is struggling in reading, don't just let them tell you that. There are five parts of reading.
Absolutely.
Is it phonemic awareness? Is it the phonics? Is it vocabulary? Is it fluency or the comprehension? So when that, when you know that, then you can better be more intentional about where you start with your child in reading. There is a phenomenal free website. It's called F C R R dot org.
Can somebody write that in the comments, please?
Yeah.
Yes, it stands for Florida Center of Reading Research. When you go to that um site, they have reading broken down in those five components that I just mentioned. So if your child is struggling with vocabulary, you'll go to the vocabulary section. You will be able to find the different grade levels. If your child is struggling in third grade vocabulary, go there. There are a number of resources specifically for your child with vocabulary. So don't let your, your teacher just tell you, oh, they need to continue to read, they're struggling with reading. No, okay, thank you for that. But what area specifically is my child struggling with? And your child's teacher, if they really care, they should be able to tell you that.
Exactly. Um, so uh Shamika, let's talk about this. Um, parents are saying, I'm tired. Okay? And it's May, it's May first. I am done. I'm not doing, I'm not doing anything else. How do parents continue this road with the end in mind? I mean, you're a business owner, you have seventy-five thousand locations. You're doing amazing things. And so how can parents work with the end in mind and say, I'm not giving up today because I still need to go.
Yes. So I, I don't know if I share with you guys, but one of my daughters is in public charter school and the other is in private school. One of them, what I'm always telling them is that I do expect a return on my investment. In order to do that, I have to do my part now. Like, um, we mentioned before, we're all women of faith, we're all believers. I firmly believe I'm not paying for college, I'm not paying for higher education. Because I'm doing the work now. So my, my message to parents through this whole pandemic, and I've been talking to different parents every day, has just been, we have to tie, just as you said, keep the end in mind. Because Fran, I think you alluded to when we send our kids back in the fall, however they go back, virtually, whatever, they're going somewhere. For me, one of my daughters um struggles very deeply with um anxiety. She is very bright. Um, and then the other is just a natural born leader, genius, all the other things. So I have different dynamics, just as we all do. All of our kids are, are extremely different. But I don't want my kids to go back with a loss of confidence either. Because you start to give up and lax on that learning and that schedule, they're not going to be as confident when they get back in the classroom. If your parents, if you stop making, making them follow through with assignments and things like that already, by the time they get back in somebody's classroom in August, they're not gonna be confident to keep up with their peers. So not now, Ty, but even through, even through the summer, because we know we've had them at home since mid-March. It's very important that we keep those routines. Um, even though we're not the teachers, we're not gonna instruct the lessons the way that the teachers would. But just having the framework established is going to make a world of difference for them when they return. And I firmly believe that. And we have to approach it with the attitude that we expect of them. So we don't want them to be lazy. If we don't want them to go, you know, go about assignments, like they don't care and they don't want to do it. Our approach to helping them, managing them, and really, you know, fortifying them has to be the same way. So we can't expect something from them that we're not pouring into them either. So.
Yes. Um, two questions. Uh, Denise said, what about allowing them to also read a level below to build confidence and a level above to challenge them? Yes, uh, what I teach my parents is that uh required books are at school and the books that children enjoy reading are at home. And so what you want to do, what Kia and we talked about um just a few minutes ago, is that you want to make sure that children are accessing literature on their level. And so it's not about reading below or above, it's about, again, accessing on their level. So the uh standardized test will give you their lexile level. And so if you go on lexile.com, you can choose books um on their lexile level. So or type in a book, it'll pull and show you what the lexile level is. And then the child is reading the book that um is on their level. And so if you want to challenge them, yes, if you have a gifted child, yes, of course you want to uh allow them to read a book above their level. But the, the, the challenge is not in the reading per se, but it's about the comprehension. Words, but are they processing? Are they understanding? Are they shifting from, I read, I'm annotating the text, I'm processing, I'm understanding, and now I'm writing. And so that is the challenge piece, not just the reading, but what are you doing with what they read?
Right.
Challenge them.
One quick note about, oh, I'm sorry, Terry.
I'm sorry.
One quick note about that, um, pre-K is my passion is where I started um teaching, so I love the babies for, for, for now. Um, and it was amazing to me that parents would come into the classroom and say, and still to this day, oh, my child can read. No, he can't. He's calling words. That's not the same thing. So. Calling words. He is not reading.
I want to see, and this is free because you have to pay for this information. Reading is not the same as recall. Parents will say, my baby can read on an eighty-seventh grade level. And I say, mom, no, they can't. No, they told, memorizing words and that's, and that's why I'm not an advocate of just teaching them sight words. Your child has to master, in order to be proficient in reading, they have to master every area of reading. And that doesn't mean calling words off of a page. That is, can they decode? Are they fluent? Do they understand and can define vocabulary and can they answer questions? Okay? And not just, did Jack, when, when did Jack go to the store? Not those type of questions. Okay?
I'm sorry. So I tell parents this all the time because parents will say, um, my child needs to learn how to read. I'm doing sight words with him. I'm like, you, you probably want to start with phonemic awareness. You probably want to make sure. So I have my five-year-old, I was just talking to a parent in my inbox and she was like, what are you gonna do for your five-year-old? I said, she takes phonics class and we, we write sentences. That's all we were doing. And you know, she can count, we, she, because she was like, we're not gonna do more? No, because if they don't have the basics, it doesn't matter. Give them, they're still not going to understand it. So it's also gotten me in trouble because my five-year-old now can sound out words. So she'll come and be like, does that mean? And I'm like, okay.
That's good. And also, um, because I'm a firm believer, I used to teach kindergarten too, like I said. I'm a firm believer in doing, if you're gonna do sight words, there's nothing wrong with it. I mean, you need them. You need it, but I would teach it in conjunction with phonics. Teach them in isolation. And one thing, and I have a five-year-old son who's in pre-K, getting ready to go to kindergarten. Teach them in isolation. And one thing, and I have a five-year-old son who's in pre-K, getting ready to go to kindergarten. And with him, um, even me flashing flashcards and sight words with him, yeah, that's okay. But then, um, if I don't ever put those sight words into context for him, it's gonna be disjointed. So he can flashcard, but if he doesn't ever see that word or we don't ever identify that word in text, it doesn't mean anything. Right.
So one, I want to jump in real quick because I'm on this call and this panel with these amazing educators who really understand like the theory and the, all of that behind it. You know, my master's degree is in gifted education and so we understand that psychology behind it. And I want to make sure though that I speak from the parent, right? Because we all realize that we, I have three children at home right now and I'm still educating the other children that I was supporting before. And I have a five-year-old, I have an eleven-year-old, and I have a nineteen-year-old who has just been thrust into distance college as a freshman. And as a parent, one of the things I want to make sure we, as a supportive body, said to the parents watching, leverage your resources. You don't have to know everything that we're sharing with you today. We all collectively have dozens of degrees, have been immersed in this. We know this, we can speak it, we're eloquent with it. And it's not your job to know this, right? It is not your job, but it's your job to know us. It's your job to leverage us because our role is to be the experts. Our role is to say, today, you're going to help your children create a word search. And I want them to practice brainstorming and here's a link so that they can take those words and put them in there and find the words. You see what I'm saying? Because I had to take off that, oh my gosh, it's my chance to help all of you become teachers. Because I find they're still lawyers. Doctors, they are still um managing their co-corporations. They are still doing this distancing, distantly with three different children on three different levels. And, and when I remind, when I reminded myself of that, I was like, okay, let me give y'all twenty-five activities that you can literally say, here, go play this game and have the confidence and knowing that as an educator, I've done the work of aligning them to the standards. All you need to do is have fun and let them have fun doing it. Communicate with my community and communicate with people that my job is to support you. You don't know. Ask me when you're nervous. Ask me when you're scared. I'm so sorry.
No, I was about to say, I love, and I hear the passion in your voice. I'm about to cry. Can you pass me some tissue, please? That's one thing that I think parents don't really understand. Everybody knows a teacher. And so you have to say, I need help. And that's what I've been saying the entire time. Out and say, please help me. What, give me, I know I've asked you ten times, but give me one more time. I need that resource. And so you have to put your ego down and say, you know, I'm just gonna work. This is baby, this is about the village concept. That's why I have these women with me to show you that we're linking arms. We're, we're coming from our different, just like uh Terry said, we, we are all educated. We have different degrees. But it's all an education, but we are all standing on the same word and we are saying, this is your village. Lean on us. And when you lean on us, you will have that community piece and you can say, I know a teacher. Can you help me? What can you do? Can you send me a resource? It takes, people ask me all the time. Yeah, when you get more in depth, you gotta pay, you gotta run me my money. If you say, Ty, can you see me, send me a website, that takes two seconds because it's right here. You say, Ty, can you give me a suggestion? That takes two seconds because it's right here. And so we have to make sure that, you know, we use our resources. Um, a parent asked Pamela asked, what about math? Is there a great resource uh to locate their level? I love Khan Academy. Um, Cheryl, real quick, and let me give one more, easy C B M. So the resources we're about to give you tonight are free. Cheryl, can you talk about Khan Academy?
Yes, Khan Academy is a great website for math practice. Um, they have all the different levels. Or if they're on upper level, they have different subjects, geometry. Um, they have um Algebra One, Algebra Two, but it's a great practice site. What I really love about Khan Academy is that it levels the students. So as they progress, and the assignments get just a little bit tougher for them. So they'll do a lot of practice assignments and then it'll give them a quiz and that, and they'll have a grade for that. I think one thing that as parents and sometimes as educators, we've learned that a grade has to be attached to everything for it to be valid. But I think we have to kind of come away from that and just appreciate being educated. I give you a grade for every assignment, but when you get to that quiz piece, it will give them a grade. And you're able to see if they mastered the concept or not.
Right.
And I think, you know, I do love Khan Academy for math practice.
Yes. Anybody else have any math suggestions? I've told Easy C B M, if you pay for Easy C B M, which is not much, I think it's like forty-nine dollars. And now if you're an educator, they're adding on six months to your subscription. And so you can test, I use that to test our scholars. And so it shows what zone they're in, um, if they need improvement in a different area. And it allows us to write uh goals for the children. So I love that resource.
Prodigy is also a good one. I know it's more of a gaming kind of thing, but I've been learning through this experience how you can, um, your kid uh can take a pre-test with it and it can determine the skills your kid is missing and then they could practice it through the gaming. Like I always just thought it was just, you know, kids getting on there and do math games. But I found when you start the um, that you can do a pre-test for them and it can determine based on grade level where your kid is missing. And then they can practice using Prodigy, using that. And you can do it even on your, they can take your phone and use Prodigy.
Yes. I would also um suggest that you ask your child's teacher because many times schools pay for different subscriptions. Um, so ask your child's teacher what subscriptions they have so that you can continue to use those at home without having to pay for anything additional. Right. Different school systems, you, different things um for pre-assessments to determine child's, the children's level. Um, STAR is a popular one and MAP is another one. Your child's teacher to share with you the, the data from those assessments. And that can kind of tell you where they are. Um, and it also may give them like standards that they need to focus on. And so you can go into these other um programs like uh Moby Maxx and Khan Academy. And practice, practice work um on those skills and those standards that they are not quite mastering just yet.
One thing I think that's just important to say, like as we are coming to a close with school, we still don't know what the schools are gonna do about these prone books, like taking them back. And this is a place of equity. You know, for school, like for myself, like they're gonna take back possibly my kids' both prone books. I have one laptop in the house, but not two. So I think it, it's important also to just, for parents to know, like books are free. And listen, your kids can listen to Audible by your phone. Uh, when it comes to math, if nothing else, you have your kid practice their, their math facts, whether it's multiplication or addition. And that's simple as go to the dollar store, get some index cards and get some good old flashcards that you put all over your house. You know, I remember as a kid, my mother would get out a notebook sheet of paper and put five math problems on it and be like, okay, here, sit here and get those done. And so even if you don't have a printer at home or you know, you're not gonna have access to these devices, because we don't know what the summer is gonna look like. Good old notebook paper and index cards at home um are very good. You can make a journal out of construction paper with notebook paper stapled at half and let them write. And just make sure they put each date on it every day. Um, just trying to make things also as, you know, science is outside. Is as simple as call your grandmother on Facebook, let her tell you about a time when she was a kid. That is history right there.
We're seeing some folks in the bathroom.
So you know, just some things that are practical that parents can do, whether you have devices or access to printer. Because I also realized, like, I'm considered a middle-class parent. I'm blessed to have a printer in the house and ink and things like that, but everybody doesn't have that. But I always keep a index card and some pencils and construction paper.
Also say this, because it was good that Kofi said that. I am an advocate of knowing your math facts. As a, and I have to talk from administrative standpoint and what it is, the requirements that are for our children um when they're in school. One thing to know, parents, is that in fourth grade and fifth grade, when we start talking about multiplication and division, the expectation is that your child is able to use strategies, not necessarily know the facts of seven times twelve, but knowing how to decompose it. So if they're able to tell you what seven times two is and seven times ten, they're able to figure out that when you put them together, that's eighty-four. So knowing those strategies, because it's no longer just knowing those and having that automaticity for math um right now. Another thing that's a really big one, and I see it a lot in my fourth and fifth grade classes, is that um, parents, we know when we grew up, we did two by two multiplication and we just knew the algorithm to how to do it. And we knew how to do long division because that's what they taught us and we learned it. That is not the case for elementary school. So if you have elementary school students, please don't confuse them right now because studies show cognitively, um, they're saying that they're not ready to be able to divide using long division, that algorithm. So they're expected to use partial products. Yes, I get it. Parents, you're like, what? That, that's not how I learned it.
You do not carry.
No, that is called regrouping. Use that Georgia standards dot um, that org website that I gave you earlier because in there, there are also educational videos. They're meant for teachers. But parents, you may um also access them. If you don't know how to use partial products, there is a video on there that will show you how to do it and how the teachers are expected to teach the children how to do it. Because they're not going to have to use the traditional algorithm on Georgia milestones.
Yes. And um, I just engage New York. Amazing resource. Today, I was working with my youngest daughter and she was, uh, she had to do the standard algorithm for division. Okay, so that looks like six divided by seventy-two. And then she had to use the distributive property with area model and then you number bonds.
Yes.
Give the answer.
But I understand uh when you do that, they do need to know how that, that simple division because they can use a model to show that, because that's what the expectation of the standard is. But when you're talking about that long division where you can't use a model or it's insane to use that model, that's where they need to know how to use those partial products. So really be careful with that and understand what the Georgia standards ask the students to be able to know um and be able to do.
Somebody said, what the heck? If you go on my uh Instagram page, I actually took a picture of it. And we say that because we're not used to it. Was saying, it, it, it allows the child to be able to, it gives them different options. It allows them to be able to process and it, it's causing them to be critical thinkers. The standard algorithm is like, okay, when you're talking about area, then you're talking about the distributive property. They have to process these things. So it's just, anybody could do six divided by seventy-two. Do that. But what, what does the proc, the process look like when you're using number bonds and you're using the area model? And it sounds crazy. But you get it and y'all the answer there. So I was, oh, I was smart today. For you. So if you're a homeschool mom, it's an amazing resource because you look so smart in front of your child and know.
Can I share one thing? Um, Kia, you mentioned um something great about making sure that parents use the resources that are given to them by the teachers already. If you don't remember to do anything else, make sure that you have access to and know, write it down, put it in your phone, all the websites and apps that your child did use in the classroom. And make sure you know their password. Because it's higher over the summer and because they're not on the district given laptop, they're gonna have to reset their password. So make sure you have all of their websites, apps and passwords and um as well. Just in case those things expire, because that's a great way for you to just set timers over the summer and make sure that they're, you know, keeping those feels sharp without overwhelming them.
And a lot of parents can rely on kids subscriptions go through the summer. You can, you don't buy anything, not, don't buy anything.
Right, nothing. So um, before we move and before we end this, I was about to say podcast, this live, this town hall meeting, I want to speak um from a special education perspective to parents that have children with disabilities. This is very important. I know that this is a trying time. And in the, not only are you talking about pan, a pandemic, but you're also thinking about children who are not receiving their services. So you're talking about children who are not receiving speech, occupational therapy, um physical therapy. Um, and being able to put their features in a, in a small setting and, you know, still be able to implement their I E P. And so I'm, I'm hearing the parents and I'm listening to you and your concern. One of the things that I want to remind you to do is make sure that you're talking to all of your child um teachers. Ones that service your children. So if your child has an OTPT, speech language, the special education teacher and the gym teacher, you want to make sure that you're speaking to all of them. Not a special ed teacher. And so you want to make sure that you're reaching out, hey, what are you doing in the classroom? Hey, how can I support my child with this? What does learning my child with this disability? Especially um, parents who have children, um, you know, with autism and, you know, it, it's just, it's so hard because we have children with a wide range of disabilities. You're struggling at home. So if you want to, please reach out to me. I'm certified in special education. Your ed teacher is supposed to be in contact with you at least three to four times a week, at least. The case manager should be talking to you. In addition to that, if it's time for your uh, your annual, for the I, your child's I E P meeting, they can still have that I E P meeting on Zoom, okay?
I have one. And then you can also ask for, even if it's not time for that, you can ask for an I E P evaluation meeting, which I did. And it was like a team of four people. And I'm glad I did because at the time, my child, her, as I call her, her exceptionalities aren't as severe, I think, as other kids. So she fell through the cracks. And so I had to ask for that. I would suggest if you have a child that has exceptionalities or special needs, definitely ask for an I E P evaluation meeting before school is out so that you can ensure that things are in place, not only for next year, but also to set you up for the summer. Oh, you know, it's gonna be the summer. No. Ask them, what are the strategies that I can be doing with my child during the summer as well? But also once school starts back, because the reality is possibly we may be starting school virtually coming in the fall. And you don't want to wait for an evaluation meeting at the beginning of the year when they trying to figure all this out.
Um, I sat in a two-hour I E P meeting today. So they were going over the psych and everything. It was, they, they tested, it was a reavow. Yeah. So in addition to that, so I'm a special education advocate. So if you have a child um with uh, that has a disability and you need an advocate, I provide those services. So I was in the meeting sitting as an advocate today. And it's a beautiful thing. And I, I would, I would suggest to all parents to carry an advocate with you. Yes, because when you have an advocate, an advocated, advocate in the meeting with you, guess what?
Stuff shift. They start asking for principals to be in on the. Stuff shift. They start asking for principals to be in on the meeting. They had an executive director. The executive director and principal, they called in to be on mine, because I asked for someone to come in and advocate with me. Now the meeting turned into ten people. Right, but my biggest issue was, you're not gonna allow for my brown child and your white school to fall between the cracks. And I want, and then they will try sometime, and they tried to bully me into signing some things, because I said I wasn't participating in some things in their schedule. And I was like, I'm not signing that.
Parents, just a quick tip, always get the draft of the I E P first.
Just about to say that, yeah.
Always. Watch, watch me. Make sure the goals and objectives meet where your child is and not standard, okay? The goals and objectives are supposed to meet them where they are and not standard. I talked about this on a meeting, um, a meeting I had before, a live where they had a child. One of my children I was advocating for, um, his goals and objectives was um on a fifth grade level. And he was fluency, he was supposed to read ninety-three words per minute or something like that. And he goes to my center and was only reading twenty-three words per minute. No, that's not what we're about to do. So, so parents, and parents don't know. You'll be like, oh yeah, he can get there. No. We have to talk about reality. And so that is why it's great for a special education advocate to sit in on your behalf. Because we know, we understand the law, the rules, the regulations. Look, I can have you with eighteen different things and you're like, look at, look at this. So make sure that, you know, you are doing what you need to do, reaching out and having that conversation. Okay, so as we end.
I'm sorry, one, one more thing. Um, parents, if you don't do anything else before May twenty-second, the last day of school, please ask in advance right now for a PDF copy of your child's school record, inclusive of report cards, assessment. Um, a lot of that stuff is already scanned into Infiniti Campus or whatever your school uses. Because we don't know where this road is going to lead, compagies, you need to have a copy of your child's records from pre-K on up to now. Because if you decide to pull them out of brick and mortar and go to homeschool, they're gonna need that. If you decide to pull them out of brick and mortar and go to virtual school, you're gonna need that. Um, and you just need, um, a lot of times we rely on logging into Infiniti Campus. And you know, you know, you need a paper email PDF copy that you can keep, just like your taxes. Think of it that way. You should always have um a copy of your child's record every year, especially if you're transitioning. Transitioning grades are kindergarten, fifth, eighth, and of course, you know, twelve.
Yeah, that's so good. So as we end, um.
One thing right before we close. Um, I just wanna say one thing. This is not the space to feel to compare yourself to any other parent. This is not the space to feel like, oh, I just don't know and just shy away. You don't only have dynamic women here that are willing to educate, willing to assist you. Or more than that, we're women of faith. If nothing else, we can pray and God send us in. So I don't want, if you're a grandparent, auntie, your godmama, uncle, you know, anyone that needs assistance, the assistance is here for you, the support is here for you. Just reach out and get the support you need, so that all children would be able to excel.
Yeah, that's good. So I love that. Yeah, this is a no judgment zone. I'm echoing. Let me, I mean, I'm, I'm, you guys. Okay, I'm not echoing anymore. Okay, great. Okay, so as we talk about the end. The end, what does the end look like? And I'm not talking about the end, the end of the school year. I'm talking about the end, what does next year? And tears come to my eyes, because we don't know what's going to happen. And I know, parents, that you're tired of virtual learning. Go back into virtual learning, what? It may happen. And so now we have to think, what am I going to do with my child? Whether that's they're going to char, well, they're at home and they're still going to do virtual learning, or I'm going to do homeschool. What's next? Frank, can you talk about this, like as a parent, as a mama, as a father? What, what is next? What does the end look like? And we don't like, so we don't know. But as educators, we've had our ear in, we've been sitting in on town hall meetings. Nobody really knows. And let me be honest with you, parents, you're in an uproar. You're like, I want the principal, I want the superintendent. But guess what? I'm ear hustling in these meetings and they don't know either.
You know, I think what it looks like is that you taking ownership of your child's education. And this is what I mean. It doesn't matter if we start in person, it doesn't matter if we do a staggered. We're in a pandemic where we don't know where we send the kids back in August and there's another outbreak. And then a million people die. You don't know. So what I think, parents, is that you can't control that instead of trying to push. And we know that some parents, I mean, this is truly not their calling. I hear them. I want you to reach out to experts. You can reach out to Ty, you can reach out to other people who will say, I've got you. Um, but I need parents to understand that this is a very critical time and that parents need to take ownership of their, of their children's learning. And this is what I mean. I don't mean taking ownership in that um, you're to blame. But you see where your child is struggling? Your, and your, your gold star, your end of the road should be, how can I get my child? How can I close gaps for my child? And lean on the community, lean on your community of people. There are people here who can help you, who will tell you what to do, who will point you to resources. But I believe that this is time for us to sit still, really think about what your kids know and do that work. Like Kofi said, every morning when I wake up, I know I'm gonna see her and her babies out there walking. And they're gonna remember that ten years from now. When COVID, I mean, we took walks every day with my mom, like they're gonna remember that. So don't focus on how can I get to the end? Look at it, look at it as a journey. And really start thinking about, how can I make sure by the time my child goes back to school, whether it's August, whether it's October, whether it's January, what can I do to enhance what my, to fill those gaps and enhance my child as a person?
I love that, Fran, what you said, and that's a good ending. That, that's an amazing, like what will your child remember? And as, as parents, we become consumed with anxiety and just overwhelmed. And your child is outside playing in the dirt. I watched my children the other day play with chalk and they were so they were so happy. And so while we're in this cycle and we're like, you know, the teacher didn't do this and they didn't do this, turn, shift your perspective. And so as we are in this pandemic, and this is a word for y'all, shift your perspective. Somebody wants their child that, that couldn't have a child. Somebody wants their husband home in their past. Somebody wants the time and they're a first responder. And so we have to lift our eyes and say, this is, this may not be the situation that I want right now. But I'm doing the best that I can. And I'm using what's in my hands. And I'm looking forward and I may not be able to see the end, but I know an end is coming. And so I have the faith and I, and I believe and I know that things will get better. And even though it looks crazy right now, it is going to get better. And so keep your eyes up, shift to your children. Think about how they're feeling right now and put all of your focus and your energy on them. And enjoy this time, because one thing about time is that we complain that we don't have enough. And now we have it and we're still complaining. The thing about time is that you never get it back. Value this time, enjoy this time. Use the time that you have to be intentional and love your children, your husband, whoever you stay with, your family through this process. Cause like my mama said, people are dying and they never died before. And, and so not to say that lightly, but we are losing people like crazy, y'all. And so we have to make sure that we are doing the best we can with the time that we are giving, because it's fleeting.
Absolutely.
And so just be intentional. Um, as we wrap up, any last words that we want to say before we end?
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, parents, if y'all don't do anything else, give yourself some grace. Not teachers, most, most of you aren't anyway. Um, and I just can't say that enough, because I'm sure all of us here on this screen, we felt bad about something we could have done differently or directions we could have gave more clarity on or whatever. Just give yourself some grace, because in this, as we're living through this pandemic, we're trying to guard our children, but we have to guard ourselves as well. Leave your trauma under a rug. Some days are gonna be different than others. Give yourself some grace, because none of us. And you know, coming out of this, as we've said, with your child's confidence, your child's heart um is intact is the most important thing.
Yeah, yeah, that's so good, so good.
The last thing I just wanted to say is, help your children manage their emotions. Help them articulate when they're feeling and what they're feeling. Um, I would also encourage you guys to block off time in the day for things, right? Block off time when the date ends. You know, I mean, because we're just rolling into everything. You have to end the day, have a closing to your day. You know, have an opening to your day, whatever time that is, whatever time that works for you. But take time to manage what's happening and allow yourself to see your children. This is your opportunity to see them, to really see them and seize that opportunity.
Yeah. Um, thank you guys so much for joining us tonight. Um, I hope that you receive a wealth of knowledge, um, just a couple of resources. I will actually, if you DM me on my page, Educationally Speaking, I will email you some resources. Uh, make sure you follow my blog, educationallyspeaking.blog. And I will, um, and I dropped it in the comments, I will actually send out a blog with all of these resources. Make sure you're following me on social media, um, at Educationally Speaking. Share this uh town hall meeting, because you, I know you were here, but somebody else, that's somebody else, that's somebody else needs it. And so share this resource, so parents can be empowered as well. Make sure you check out um my website, educationallyspeaking.net. I have a wealth of resources. We're offering online tutoring, tutoring right now. We have a virtual academy. Um, and we also have downloadable content. Make sure that, again, you're intentional. I appreciate you reaching out. Utilize these ladies that are on here. You can leave a comment if you want to. Make sure, if you are in South Fulton, you are voting for Francesca. Okay, out here, who else is on the ballot? If your mom is on the ballot, you vote. Let me do her right here, Fran, right here. That's who you voted for, out here, out here, nobody's saying. Yay, so you vote for her. And thank you guys so much for joining me. Thank you for always supporting me. Please don't forget to like the page, because we're always rolling out resources, doing um online instruction. And just making sure we're empowering you and again, making sure we're equipping you and giving you strategies, tips and tools in order to give your child access to the curriculum. Thank you so much for joining us. Please share and have a winning day. I hope today is kind to you. Bye.